...per speaker for no longer than 60 minutes in total. We'll have our superintendent's report, our correspondence and board comments. Tonight we will vote on the BOSI's budget and we will also vote on BOSI's candidates. We will have the personnel agenda, the consent agenda. We will have a personnel addendum, an addendum to appoint an election inspector, a number of addendums. We will not be using a second executive session and we will then adjourn the meeting. There are two corrections on the agenda. On the consent agenda, item 15.08, we will scratch that from the agenda. And then there are new items designated as addendum items 16 through 22 listed on the agenda. We have a motion for previous minutes.
Motion to approve the minutes of the previous regular meeting held on Monday, April 8, 2013.
Comments or questions? All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carried. Second previous minutes.
Motion to approve the minutes of the previous special meeting held on Monday, April 15, 2013.
Second. Comments or questions? All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed?
Aye.
Motion carried. Okay, do we have any student or school presentations tonight? Any parent groups? Okay, open to the public. Three minutes per speaker for a total of 60 minutes.
Dennis Padlock, Beacon resident. Any of you folks who watch the show Mash? I like Mash. There was one particular episode I liked when Hawkeye got in a Jeep, Allen Olber, got in a Jeep and went to the front and went into a meeting with the people that was the generals and whatever else fighting on our side and their side. And he said, I'm paraphrasing, and he said, "Can we get along? Stop the fighting. What are we doing this for?" Bring it to my comments tonight. At the last special meeting, I did talk to the superintendent, asked a few questions. I don't know if I appreciated the response that he gave me, but he responded to me anyway. He helped the district where he's at now navigate through many new mandates, community common core implementation, and district's new APPR, Annual Professional Performance Review. He also holds a doctorate in elementary and secondary education administration from Campella University in Minneapolis, Minnesota. That's also impressive. What I'm looking for as a resident, and what he told me, conflict resolution. Where's that in his bio? I didn't see conflict resolution in that. I asked him about, in the cafeteria, about, I asked him about how he's going to prevent and squash and stop the bullying going on in this district at Roundabout. Are we simply turning a blind eye? Because people are being thrown downstairs getting their arm broken. Heard about that one, folks, yet? I suggest all you board members go to Roundabout, spend a little time over there, folks, if you're not getting the information that you need to have. You really need to go to Roundabout, folks, and spend some time at Roundabout. Because what I'm hearing, who am I? It's pathetic. He said, he told me, he said, "We're going to have," he said, "classes about bullying." Classes about bullying? How did you prevent it? How did you stop it? I asked him. He looked at me like I had four heads. I'm sure he's a nice guy academically. What is he going to do so the youth in Beacon can come to Roundabout in a peaceful school district and learn? When they don't have someone looking over their shoulder, ready to punch them in their eye, throw them down a set of stairs, when no one's looking? That's when bullying happens. We know that, right, folks? They're not going to do it in front of a teacher. They're not going to do it in front of a principal, am I right? They're going to do it in a hallway when no one's watching. That's when they're going to do it. They're going to do it on the way home, when no one's watching. They're going to do it around the corner when no one's looking. That's when they're going to do it. Does anybody care?
Dennis, please summarize your thought. You've exceeded three minutes.
Oh, you're counting?
We have a number of people here tonight and I'm sure they'd all wish to speak.
Okay. Okay, Madam President, thank you very much for that comment. But I will wrap it up.
Thank you.
Let me say this. I will be listening and I will be watching. Thank you for your job.
Who else would like to speak?
Hi, how are you guys doing? Wow, it's pretty ironic that I come here tonight. Haven't been here in a very long time. I'm just trying to rest my brain. And I'm back because I'm alarmed. Some of the board members already know that I'm alarmed. And the more parents that I speak to, I have to say that there are some positive things that I do hear coming out of Roundabout Middle School. My child just arrived there and I'm going to tell you, I had reservations before he got there. My husband and I contemplated sending him to private school. We searched, you know, violence in different private schools in the area, the educational status, what they bring to the student, what the students' diversity bring to the schools. And my son pleaded that he be afforded the right to go to a school with his peers, people that he's been with for the last three or four years. And my husband and I have decided to respect that. And in respecting that, I have met with some people who are very, I'm going to say, appear to be very passionate about securing the health and safety of the children. But there's also a saying that my mother would say to me, and I now say to my kids, "What goes on in this house stays in this house." So I'm sure, I don't know how many of you, but I do know of one, that may have a child that's going to go to Roundabout. There is a lot of things happening there that isn't safe. And when you have to demand that your child be walk to class, and it has been respected, following in the hallways, watching on and off the bus to ensure that he's safe, or she's safe, I think that that warrants some attention. My kids went here, my two daughters went here, there used to be a peer mediation program here, and I thought that it worked. I think it's very effective. Students know firsthand what's going to go down at 3:00. Everybody knows that. I don't know what's happening at the middle school. You know, I thought Ms. Lazarus had it all down pat, but then I learned that, you know, again, what you do when the dog comes out in the light. So I don't know many people here, but when it comes down to the safety, the health and the wellness of my child and my children, I will show up and show out. And so I'm not really demanding that anybody give me any attention. What I'm demanding is just some guidance, just some assistance, just some support. And I'm willing to help, you know what I'm saying? You know, put these kids in whatever program so that when they're frustrated or they're upset and annoyed, they don't resort to violence. You know, we know that it can be verbal, but we also know that it was physical. And my son, he was physically hit by somebody. And he was raised not to hit a girl. And regardless of the fact that I gave him some choice words after he was hit, he still said, "You said, 'do not do this.'" And so because of that, I have to stand with him. So I'm asking you guys, you know, I'm going to keep emailing, I'm going to keep communicating until somebody answers me. And I can go all the way up the ladder. Y'all know me, I will sit in the library for hours until I get it right. I pulled out the little law books, you know, related to school law. I've been speaking to Detective Williams, like I'm doing on my little homework. So today I just have a summary. I'm asking somebody, anybody other than Dr. Walkley, who I already met with. I met with Mr. Ware. This problem is systemic. It's above them at this point. So I think it's going to take a collective team of people to decide that violence in the middle school will lead to violence in the high school. And the answer is not telling the kids in the high school, "If you fight, you go to jail." That's not the answer. So I hope somebody helps me. Thank you.
Who else would like to speak?
Jan Stor, district resident. I know I go to a lot of the different athletic contests here in the district, partly because I have family that participates. I have just a couple of questions. One is, how have we implemented the Dignity for All Students Act with the teams? You know, have we done an education with the coaches as to the process? Because sometimes some of the language that comes across and, you know, the way that some of the kids are spoken to, it doesn't appear as though the coaches are following this. I think there's a big lesson to be learned from what happened in Rutgers. So that's one question. The other one is, you know, more of a philosophical one. And I know over the past 30 years, Mr. Romanino has done a wonderful job as a coach and as an administrator of the programs. We have hundreds, just hundreds of kids that are involved in the athletic program here in Beacon. But one of the things that becomes really concerning is how we view high school athletics. Is it the coach's job to win every game and if they are not winning the games, that they don't have a job again as a coach? Or are we look, you know, do we believe that we have an overabundance of Division I athletes that are going to get scholarships to, you know, major Division I schools? I'm talking to you as a person that has been a coach for over 30 years, from law to flight through college. So it's not like I'm, you know, not coming from any background here. My point is, is that, part of my philosophy, is that if a child comes to practice every day, they're there religious each and every day, putting in the time, they deserve to get on the field. It may only be for one or two minutes, but as long as the coach explains to the kids what their role is as part of the team. Now granted, we may have a 1-0 game that can go back and forth, or 0-0 game that, you know, could influence one way or the other, maybe beyond both intersections and things of that nature. But we have a number of coaches and programs where, you know, halfway through the first half, we're getting blown away and kids are still not being put into the match. What are they learning? They're not learning about sportsmanship. They're not learning that their time is valued because they're putting the time in on the field during practice, but they're not getting time into the game. Every child that goes out for a sport wants to be able to participate. And I think that has to be part of our philosophy. Okay? Are we develop, are we trying to groom kids to become professional athletes? Or are we trying to groom student, emphasis, student athletes that are able to take something away from the sport that they have? And that maybe at some other point in time, they're going to take their time, you know, what they learned from those particular sports and give back to their community? Or if they go into education, give back to that sport as a coach? And these are going to be things, and they will emulate the things that they learned from the coaches that they played under. It's something for you to think about. It's something that I really believe needs to be discussed because you have a number of kids that, you know, "Oh, next year, if I'm a junior or senior, I'll get game." But they're not going to be prepared to play in that game because they don't know what it's all about at the competitive level by actually playing against someone other than their own teammate. Thank you.
Would anyone else like to speak? Thank you.
Good evening. My name's Tracy Alaguerre. I'm a parent and taxpayer in the district. So as per usual, I'll be asking about if there's any update on the Assistant Superintendent search forthcoming in your report. Has there been any announcement made about, I know Mr. Romanino was kind enough to lend a hand at Roundabout for the time being, but has there been like an announcement or an update about the leadership at Roundabout? And thirdly, I'd like to say that for those of you that didn't see the performance of The Wiz over the weekend, I thought it was absolutely fantastic, and I just want to congratulate everyone that was a part of that. So that's all I have for tonight.
Did you look at my notes? I think you do, don't you? Kelly, if you show that, hold my notes. I'll be, during my recording, I'll answer all your questions and then some. Thank you for your questions.
Thank you. Okay, anyone else? Thank you. Mr. Hill, do you have your report?
Thank you. We appreciate the public's comments. We listen carefully. Once again, thank you, Mr. Malherne. It's really a joy and a pleasure to see Inspector and Parents come out. May not sincerely. I'd like to focus on comments on the middle school and then answer some of the questions. We'd like to first thank Eric Romanino. Eric has been the real hero this year. He filled in the high school and is doing it at the middle school right now. And he's going to be helping us out with, as mentioned, Dennis mentioned, the APPR, a number of other things. So thanks, Eric, for your great work. 32 years of Beacon, but who's counting? And we got a couple more coming up, so that's great. We're very pleased to recommend Brian Saltish. Starting May 6th, he will be the acting principal, acting middle school principal. Everyone knows Brian. He's homegrown. An example, what I like to view as some of the best of Beacon, I told you I would lie a little bit, right? Brian taught for a number of years very successfully. He's an app teacher in the high school. And he decided to go into administration. I remember having a conversation with him the last time I was at Beacon. "Oh, what should I do? Should I leave security of the classroom? I love the kids." And he moved to the high school. And then because of a change, he was at the middle school. But, you know, the old saying that when one door closes, another opens. So Brian will step into the role as an acting principal until June 30th. We will be posting within the district for full-time principal, and I encourage Brian to apply. Also, we're going to be posting the next couple of days for acting assistant principal to fill in for Brian. And we do have some folks that are on our faculty that are quite talented. And it's, I hope, going to be the practice of Beacon to look inside first. So we're encouraging folks certified to apply for that. And in a May 13th meeting, we will be applying an acting assistant principal to work with Brian for the rest of the year. So we're excited about that. Brian has a great vision and a lot of passion about the success of the Beacon Middle School. We're very happy about that. And along with that, Brian and I had a chance, along with, I also had a chance to talk to Eric Romanino. One of the things we're going to do regarding security is we're hiring two additional point time school monitors for the building as soon as possible, a couple more of adults, and they'll be trained by Brian and Eric. And we have established new safety protocols and procedures along with the Beacon Police Department and Fish Gulf that all the teachers have been familiarized with and they have prepared to deal with. And this summer, as part of one of our, last part of our building project, we're adding a great deal of video surveillance equipment in the schools, particularly the middle school and high school, so that all areas inside and outside of the building will be covered. And not only will it keep the kids safe from outside problems, but it's, I found in the past, it's really a great help with student management issues. So we're looking forward to that, and that should be in place for the opening of school in September. So there'll be maybe a few more barriers and inconveniences for visitors and parents to come into the district, but it's all in effort to keep our students safe. I did speak with the new superintendent. I'll be transitioning with him. And I have great respect for Dr. Dorwin. I think he's going to bring a lot to the district. And we talked about one of the goals of student safety and bullying. So that will be on the plate and a discussion early on with the Board of Education. I would tell you that I would send my own children to Beacon. It's the same place to go to school. Beacon Middle School has a very experienced and caring faculty. I was down there today and it's very seldom that I go down there for a problem. And I see people working and they're doing a great job. Same thing at the high school. My kids are kids. We don't like bullying. And I have grandchildren now, and I understand how you feel. But we take it very seriously. We are passionate about it, and nothing gets swept under the rug. And I believe with Eric transitioning to Brian, that Brian has told me that that's something he cares deeply about. You ask any student that knows about Brian Saltish, and that's my case. And I want to thank him again and thank the faculty for their continued great work on the head for our children. As far as the Assistant Superintendent, Barbara Walkley and I, Barbara being the Assistant Superintendent and probably one of the finest Assistant Superintendents I've ever worked with, and I did work with quite a few, whatever that means. We've been conducting interviews. We have one more Friday. But we have, during the interviews, we have found a splendid candidate, an outrageous candidate that we're excited about and moving forward in the next step of the process. So if that does come to fruition with the, with working with Dr. Dorwin, I think Beacon's going to be a great place. They have a good high school team, good middle school team, fine administrators, good teachers. We'd be proud to send your kids there, really. Our next board meeting is May 13th. So it's about a little ways away. And on May 13th, we're going to be doing our budget presentation required by law. We're very pleased that the budget is going up 1.07 percent only. We wish it wouldn't be any percent. Average tax value is 2.79 percent. With continuing our staff and initiatives. We will see coming next year another initiatives in technology as well interface with our instructional program. So we encourage folks to come out to the meeting, but there will be a postcard that you'll be receiving probably in the next few days that's going to explain all about the budget. And then after the 13th meeting, there'll be a newsletter that comes out, very much like last year, that will explain in detail what you'll be voting on, including school board seats on May 21st. On the agenda tonight, there's a resignation by Christine Chequela. Christine is going to another district to continue working in the PPS field. And I want to publicly thank her for her fine work and wish her the very best. Also, there's a very special gentleman that's retiring at the high school. He's been in education longer than me. I didn't believe it. 43 years. Al Allen is a teacher at the high school, and he is a middle school. Sorry. Kim always keeps me on the right track. And Al is retiring this year after being at Beacon a number of years. And we ought to wish him very, all the best. At our last board meeting in June, we will be having a ceremony that I hope becomes practice here. It will honor the people that are receiving tenure this year. And we'd also like to say our final farewell to those of our fellow staff members that are retiring. So that'll be June 17th. I invite everybody, I always say it'll be cake. Kelly cake.
The only cake to have.
That's it.
Thank you, Mr. Hill.
Do we have any board comments tonight?
I would like to thank Mr. Malherne and your team that came to present to us tonight. I truly enjoy, and I know I speak on behalf of the board, I don't know how many years Jesse and Richie have come, but I feel like we've watched Alexander grow. And each year when he speaks to us, you can see how much work and how much poise. Each year, he grows and his confidence grows, and that can only be a reflection of his personal growth within the district. And it's just, I take great joy in listening to them speak and their presentations each year. So thank you for bringing them to us. I'd also like to congratulate anyone and everyone associated with the production of The Wiz. I attended Friday night's performance, and I know many, if not all, of the board members attended at least one performance of The Wiz. But Mr. Skorone and Mr. Devine truly outdid themselves. We have a beautiful theater, and we've had a beautiful theater for a number of years. But this was, in my eyes, the first true use of that theater. I mean, the work they did, the costumes, the sets. I'm not a theater person, but they overwhelmed me. Congratulations to all of them, all of the students and everyone associated with the production of The Wiz. Okay? Mike, we're on to voting for the BOSIs. How do we just go about that? We make a motion to have a vote?
No, you can, you can move the motion. That's at 12.01 now, as it's stated there. What you'll have to do with the next one is you'll have to pay two and three candidates.
Okay, so we just read it as it is now? Okay. All right. Just double checking before I stumble. Okay. May I have a motion to vote on the BOSI's budget?
Motion to approve the
Motion to approve the Duchess Voces administrative bu- budget in the amount of four million, one hundred and thirty-nine thousand, six hundred and forty-five dollars for the two thousand thirteen, two thousand fourteen school year.
Second. Comments or questions? All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carried.
And on this next motion, if the person who moves it wants to insert the two, uh, the two names.
Okay. Okay, may I have a motion for Voces candidates?
Motion to vote for Ralph Cimento and Jim Milano for the Board of Duchess, Duchess County Voces election.
Second. Comments or questions? All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carried. May I have a motion to approve the personnel agenda?
Motion to approve the personnel agenda as attached from A to O.
Second. Comments or questions? All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carried. May I have a motion for consent agenda?
Motion to approve consent agenda fifteen, two through fifteen point twelve.
Second. Comments or questions? All those in favor? Opposed? Motion carried.
Excuse me? Melissa?
We scratched that prior to start.
Yeah, just one comment. One of those items was the adoption of the budget. And could you, you wanna just comment about that maybe for the public?
Sure. Would you like to comment?
Yeah, yeah, okay, sure. Um, one of the items on our consent agenda was the adoption of the budget, which, um, our, um, Assistant Superintendent of Business has made presentations on, over, uh, prior meetings, and, uh, Mr. Hilberg has presented on quite a few times, and has also just explained about what our tax levy was on our budget-to-budget transfer. The last item on the consent agenda was the acceptance by the Board to adopt the budget in the amount of sixty-two million, one hundred and eighty-five thousand dollars. We're not voting on it, obviously, because it is a public vote, but it's that the budget has been accepted by the Board to go forth to be voted on by the public. So I just wanted to make sure that everybody was clear about that, and that they're aware of it, so that we are fully transparent. Thank you.
Thank you. Now, each of these addendums, we do one by one. Okay. May I have a motion to approve Personnel Addendum sixteen point zero one?
Motion to approve Personnel Item sixteen point zero one.
Comments or questions? All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carried. Addendum seventeen.
Motion to approve Addendum seventeen point oh one to appoint election inspectors.
Second. Comments or questions? All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carried. Addendum eighteen.
Motion to approve the stipulation of settlement dated April twenty-second, two thousand thirteen.
Second. Comments or questions? All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carried. Addendum nineteen.
Motion to approve the addendum to the contract with Anderson Center for Politics as listed on the agenda.
Second. Comments or questions? All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carried. Addendum twenty.
Motion to approve agreement with Jody Santriani for occupational therapy services effective four twenty-four, two thousand thirteen, through six twenty-one, two thousand thirteen.
Second. Comments or questions? All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carried. Addendum twenty-one.
Motion to approve the consultant agreement with Angelo Romano to serve as Per Diem CSC CPSA Chair effective four twenty-nine, two thousand thirteen, through six thirty, two thousand thirteen.
Second. Comments or questions? All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carried. Almost there. Addendum twenty-two.
Motion to approve the revision to the supplemental memorandum of agreement with the VTA dated January fourteenth, two thousand thirteen.
Second. Comments or questions? All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carried. May I have a motion to adjourn the meeting?
Motion to adjourn the meeting.
Second.